Liberty and justice for all.
Okay, today, Auditor Yoder is going to lead us in prayer, and it'll be followed by a moment of silence for Joe Ware, who was Martha's brother who passed yesterday. And Martha's here today to be with us to serve the constituents of Trumbull County and finish your duty. And also, Maro has somebody.
Also for Mr. Tony Cario, who was the Director of Area Agency on Aging, which is now Direction Home Ohio, of Eastern Ohio. Wonderful person, ran a fantastic agency that we dealt with with our senior levy, and we're going to miss him as well.
Auditor Yoder?
Good Lord, I thank you for this day, for our country and our county. Lord bless us today as we make decisions that they would be done with grace and wisdom. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, thank you. According to revised code, when we don't have a clerk or the assistant clerk available, the county auditor serves as clerk. So today Martha Yoder gets the honored privilege of serving as our clerk today. And I'm honored to have you up here with us, Martha. I wish all three of us were here for this historic event. But we'll start out with our roll call.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Here.
Commissioner Frenchco. Commissioner Malloy.
Here.
Okay, our next meeting will be in this room next Tuesday at 10:30 a.m. for the workshop and next Wednesday for our regular meeting as scheduled at 10:30 a.m. also in this room. And that will be April 16th and April 17th. We're going to start out with the item number one, Auditor Yoder.
To dispense with the reading of the minutes of the workshop session dated April 2nd, 2024, and the regular meeting dated April 3rd, 2024, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion?
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Commissioner Frenchco.
I don't know what to do.
To approve the bills as per the individual departmental purchase orders invoices forwarded to the Trumbull County Auditor for payment, providing all procedures of state law have been followed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve the appropriations as listed.
Second the motion?
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To approve the transfer of appropriations.
Motion to approve the transfers as listed.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To receive the amended certificate of the County Budget Commission Number 3-2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To approve an agreement by and between the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, Trumbull County Auditor Martha Yoder and Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated to purchase Esri Enterprise Advantage Program, E.E.A.P. consulting services. The total cost amount is $108,500 listed in the Esri proposal to be paid out of Fund 007011110011471505507.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion?
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To concur with the Trumbull County Engineer to grant the right-of-way permits requested by the companies listed Village Energy Cooperative, ASW Pipeline LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Keith Ames from the position of Sewer Line Maintenance Assistant, pay range six, zero years at 1752 to the position of TV Inspector, Grouding Assistant Technician, pay range six, zero years, 1752, with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department effective Thursday, April 11th.
Make a motion to approve the personnel action?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To accept third-party contract between grantee Direction Home of Eastern Ohio and sub-grantees Grace African Methodist Episcopal Church and Easter Seals of Mahoning-Trumbull and Columbiana Counties for $10,000.
Motion to approve.
Second the motion?
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To amend the journal action dated March 6, 2024, authorizing the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to enter into contract agreements for the Ohio Healthy Aging Grant with the agencies listed. Amendment is necessary to change the names of the vendors to match the W-9 and corresponding contract documents.
Make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To accept a third-party contract between grantee Youngstown Jewish Federation and sub-grantee Merkin Associates for $100,000.
Motion to accept a third-party contract?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes, and I'd like to thank the Senior Levy Board and Diane for all the hard work in spending this grant money that we got from the state. And I know they put an awful lot in into this and the community rallies around it together. And these third-party groups step forward to serve our community also, so kudos to them.
To release Mr. Vincent Peterson as a member of the Trumbull County Local Corrections Planning Board effective immediately.
A motion to approve.
Second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Number 13, to release Judge Tom Geisigem as a member of the Trumbull County Local Correction Planning Board effective immediately.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To adopt an improvement resolution determining to proceed with the construction of Scoville Drive Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project known as County Project Number 5S-16 in the Trumbull County Combined Sewer District, Mosquito Creek Subdistrict, and to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for construction of said project.
A motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To authorize Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign a Notice to Proceed letter to pro-scape septic and landscape contractors for the replacement 3,000, or sorry, three household treatment systems being funded through the PY 2023 Home Sewage Treatment System, HSTS Reserve Program for eligible homeowners awarded on March 6, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To authorize Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign a Notice to Proceed letter for 2M Services LLC for the replacement two household treatment systems being funded through the PY 2023 Home Sewage Treatment System, HSTS Reserve Program for eligible homeowners awarded on March 6, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To execute on behalf of Trumbull County the natural gas purchase contract with Constellation New Energy Gas Division, Constellation Commercial and Industrial Sales effective with the September 2024 billing cycle and ending with the August 2025 billing cycle at a fixed rate of $3.19 per MCF to the burner's tip for the purchase of natural gas for county departments.
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To award a contract to Baker Bedner Snyder and Associates, the new Dog Pound Design Qualifications Project, qualification project at its new location next to the Animal Welfare League with the total engineering cost of $192,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
To appropriate funds to mitigate the growth and negative impact of the spread of Hydrella in Mosquito Lake in the amount of $300,000 to be paid in three annual installments starting in 2024 to be used by the Trumbull County Economic Development Director Nick Coggins for the purpose of processing and paying invoices reviewed and approved by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Payments will be made directly to the state purchasing selected vendor, Ohio Lake Management Services, DBA Aqua Dock Lake and Ponds Management, who is under contract with the ODNR to conduct fluoridone chemical treatment that addresses the aquatic nuisance vegetation issue at Mosquito Lake.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. And discussion with this, a lot of people are involved in this. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, ODNR. And we've had help from the Mayor of the City of Cortland, DeeDee Petrowski, and our Special Events Coordinator, Jeffrey Jang. And also Beth Carmichael from our own Tourism Bureau has stepped up to help lead with this. Josie at the State Parks. We've had many meetings on this. This is an issue brought to our attention by boaters and skiers and people that have docks on the lake about the harmful effects of this aquatic invasive species Hydrella that is a plant that grows in mats and spreads quickly. It makes it to the point where boating is not possible. Skiing is not possible. Swimming is not possible. It's something that isn't the regular plant life on the lake. We don't want anyone to think they're getting rid of all the vegetation on the lake and killing all the vegetation. It's not the case. This is an invasive species that we've seen lately that we have over 100 acres of it now. And it's spreading quickly. And if we don't act now on this, scientists of tourists, it'll double every year. Right now, we're looking at a cost of a little over $300,000 to treat it. We are putting in $100,000 a year over the next three years. We're getting some matching money from the state and from the feds. Been working with our U.S. Senators' Offices and our Congressional Office to do that and with help again from the Corps of Engineers and the state to address this. This is a economic issue. We have our Planning Commission involved in this because the economy of what goes on in Mosquito Lake is crucial to the economy of our whole county. If people stop boating, if they stop fishing there, if they stop utilizing the lake, it would cripple our economy and hurt our economy. It was the second largest lake in the state. So I'm proud to cast my vote on this one to do what we can for the lake. And this is just a start in hopes that Commissioner Cantal Mesa and myself, moving forward, we will recognize Mosquito Lake as an economic engine and the communities around the lake need some government assistance to get where they can be, to be the best they can be for the future of all of our citizens and our economic wealth. So, call the vote?
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes, absolutely.
Number 20, to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act Funds, ARPA, Liberty Township Park. And jumping a few pages, whereas the county has determined that Liberty Township has demonstrated that improvement of the proposed walking paths will assist in responding to the adverse impact of the public health emergency. And therefore, the county has determined that in the judgment of the board, the following grant qualifies as a type of project which will respond to and mitigate the adverse economic effects of the pandemic, which consists of the following: a one-time grant to Liberty Township in the amount of $450,000, $250,000 of which is to be used towards the improvement of the stormwater management system at the Liberty Center Park, and $200,000 to be used toward improving the ballfields, picnic pavilions, and walking paths at Liberty Center Park.
Motion to approve.
Second, and discussion again with this. As an effort, we made here as the Board of Commissioners to reach out to the townships and include all the townships in county government with this ARPA funds to spread the wealth across the whole township. We are honored to do this. It is a big amount of money, but liberty is crucial again to the the future of Trumbull County with Belmont Avenue, the economy there, the the community. Liberty has been one of our oldest economic engines, even before we had a lot of what's going on in 422 and Warren and growth in other communities. So for us to be able to revitalize that and do a little bit of help there with their the ballfields, which is kind of a community link. I've been there myself before for ballgames. And you know, there's thousands of people that from Liberty and other areas that that go there. And to hamper it with the drainage problems they've had before, it's an honor that we have this ARPA money to do things exactly like this to help the community so they can get out and enjoy the resources, enjoy the outdoors, and enjoy being a community without the adverse effects with the with water drainage.
And Commissioner, I know that Trustee Chismar is here as well. I saw him walk in. We appreciate him being here. Yeah, come on up and then we'll we'll do the check presentation at the end. But I know that you've been working very diligently on this.
Yep, Liberty Township Trustee Greg Chismar. Very much appreciate what you guys have done here, all three commissioners, fellow trustees in the administration, at Liberty Administrator Martha Wyrick at Liberty. We worked all together, looking at different projects. And we figured this would be the best project for Liberty, where Liberty would benefit the most out of for the parks. But we definitely appreciate it.
Well, it's it's something as Commissioner Malloy said, that you know, people love to recreate and people need a safe and vibrant place to go recreate. And this is this is one step closer to doing that. And our parks are so important across the county. So we commend you guys for taking on this project and we're glad to help.
I appreciate it. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Just stay there for a second while we call the vote?
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes. Okay, if we can, if we have a check presentation for you. Can we get out the cash?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, we only have two commissioners here to.
I know that you you were just like me worried about that one too. Yes. No, 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 it's it's in the it's in the hopper. Yeah.
Madam Clerk?
To enter, number 21, to enter into an agreement by and between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners of Trumbull County, Ohio, BTCC, and Liberty Township Township to provide funds for the improvement of the stormwater management systems at Liberty Center Park, the improvement of Liberty Center Park ballfields, picnic pavilions, and walking paths as fully described in Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated by the reference to the project. And the BTCC allocates the sum of $450,000, $250,000 for the improvement of the stormwater management system at Liberty Center Park, and $200,000 for the improvement of the ballfields, picnic pavilions, and walking paths at Liberty Center Park to the township.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Number 22, to award the lowest and best bid as submitted by Becto Controls for the removal, disposal, and replacement of current warehouse lighting with the total cost of $32,982 to be paid from the fund
Motion to approve.
Second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
And that should complete the renovations at the Board of Elections. We're top-notch now. Pardon me?
You want just this first part or?
Yeah.
Okay. Number 23, to adopt resolution for the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to approve the payment of county funds for Warren Township's purchase of a consultant study regarding the Trumbull County Metro Park's Levitsburg Dam Removal Project.
And then you can read the this section here.
Whereas the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, at the request of Warren Township and the county engineer with the legal authority in occurrence with ORC 3071515 have agreed to pay the township not more than $30,000 or 70%, 75% of the cost of the dam consultant study services if the cost of the study is less than $40,000 in conjunction with the county engineer who out of his offices' funds have has agreed to pay $10,000 or 25% of the dam consultant consultant services study if costing less than $40,000.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion and discussion. I'm going to thank our Trumbull County Board of Commissioners for our metro park system and our three trustees in Warren Township. This was something we sat up here just a month ago. And there were people that said this couldn't be done. It's not going to happen. We're not going to be able to get these people together. And it got a little tense for a while. We were able to pull the meeting together yesterday. We had a fantastic meeting with two of the commissioners and all the trustees, and I believe all the park board members present, including our executive director. We met for about two hours at the table out there. We talked about the pros and cons of of the dam. We had a lot of public that was here with some good input. And we all walked out of that meeting yesterday shaking hands and looking forward to moving forward together as a community and doing what's best for the citizens. And they are going to commence the study, and Kay Anderson is back there. Kay, I I commend you for bringing us together, for initializing this and for voicing your opinion and and fighting on behalf of your citizens that they have a voice that was heard, and I think they were yesterday. We're going to fund the study. We're going to get back together with the three entities and then look at all the facts that we can disseminate from both studies that have been done and then make the best decision we can on behalf of the citizens. But it was a good government working together, the best I've seen since I've been here in a year and a half of government officials, public servants coming together, throwing out their differences, throwing out all the hearsay, and thinking about the citizens first and thinking about what's best for our county. And I'm honored that we were part of that meeting. I'm thankful to the board. I'm thankful for the trustees for full attendance and the respect that everybody showed each other yesterday. It really did go well yesterday. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay, Maro, number 24? 24. Sorry. Okay, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G3, conference with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action. That's my motion.
I will second that motion.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes. We have a couple of quick executive sessions, so we will be back. I know you've got some comments and public comments. We get some things to talk about when we come back, so just bear with us. We're way ahead of schedule, so we'll be back in a few.
Thank you.
For the record.
For the record.
Yeah.
Make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 122.22G3 which is conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay, uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public employee.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, agenda item twenty six, make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised Code 121.22G1 to consider the discipline of one building maintenance public
Make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 121.22 G1 for consideration of the discipline of one building maintenance public employee. It's my motion.
Second.
Mr. Cantal Mesa? Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Twenty-eight, to approve the personnel action for a two-day unpaid suspension of an employee of the Trumbull County Building Maintenance Department. The employee violated the Trumbull County Policy and Procedure Manual. The employee will serve the suspension from Tuesday, April 16th, 2024 through Wednesday, April 17th, 2024.
Motion approved.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Okay, in Agenda 29, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 121.22 G4, preparing, which is preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations in the collective bargaining strategy for the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. This is the last one, I promise. We'll be back.
Okay, apologize everyone. Make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 121.22 G4, which is preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations in the collective bargaining strategy for the Trumbull County Sheriff's Office.
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy?
Yes.
Number thirty-one, to accept or what? Okay, to accept the fact-finding report findings and recommendations issued by Jeffrey A. Balkan Esquire Fact Finder on April 5th, 2024, including alternative agreements incorporated therein by reference pertaining to the collective bargaining unit agreement between the Trumbull County Sheriff, Jail CO Sergeants and Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association.
Make a motion to accept the Fact Finder's report.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Commissioner Malloy?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our regular business for the day. There's a couple of things I want to bring up real quick. First of all, we've got an award up here, Valley Vision Award that we received this morning. They had 500 people at the waypoint in Canfield, and the Chamber of Commerce honored the Trumbull County Commissioners, the Mahoney County Commissioners with their, I think it's Spirit of the... Spirit of the Valley Award. And that was for our working with Valley Vision 2050 and our partnership we have with the Chamber of Commerce and the business community. It was a really, really nice ceremony. It was honored that we received this, and it's something that when you look around the room there and you saw the community leaders, everybody from Dr. Yorkoons of 49ers to Ed Moransky and, and architects, doctors, lawyers, construction people, all there celebrating and honoring us for that. Last week, it was brought up that perhaps we didn't need a clerk and that I could, as statutorily required, if you don't have a clerk, I could be the clerk, and that somehow that would save the county money. The reality is that I am in this building more than forty hours every single week working on my statutory duties. I'm here a lot of days, twelve hours. I work very hard at the job I have, and I love it. I love every minute of it. I wake up every single morning happy to come to work, and I want that for every single person that I know. There's only twenty-four hours in a day, and what the clerk does is more than just sit up here and call the role and go through the agenda. There's a lot that goes into preparing the agenda. There are other duties that are required that I did not do this week. I got the agenda. I did review it myself. I also printed out the backup documentation to see how long it would take to do that, actually, for the other commissioner. That's actually a good idea. It takes about an hour and a half to two hours to print everything out and organize it, and it's not really that hard that she could do it herself. But I didn't do nearly what Lisa does. Lisa prepared everything and made sure it was good, and Chrissy helped this morning. It would, if, if we would not have the interim clerk and you guys would, or the board would choose to, to make me the clerk or make that my statutory responsibility, have me take over my statutory responsibility, it would not be without cost. I would have to appoint another deputy in my office to either do, pick up my slack where I can't do that work because I don't have time, or to do that work. So her idea of this cost savings is inaccurate, and I wanted people to understand.
Thank you.
Okay. And I guess to end things, I said earlier, you had a text about how boring it was. I just got a very important one that says it wasn't boring, it was a breath of fresh air. So we're going to leave the meeting at that, and.
I'll make, make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Cantal Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our regular business for the day. And there's a couple of things I want to bring up real quick. First of all, we've got an award up here, Valley Vision Award that we received this morning. They had five hundred people at the waypoint in Canfield, and the Chamber of Commerce honored the Trumbull County Commissioners, the Mahoney County Commissioners, with their, I think it's Spirit of the, Spirit of the Valley Award. And that was for our working with Valley Vision twenty fifty and our partnership we have with the Chamber of Commerce and the business community. It was a really, really nice ceremony. It was honored that we received this, and it's something that when you look around the room there and you saw the community leaders, everybody from Dr. Yorcoons, the Forty-Niners, to Ed Moransky and, and architects, doctors, lawyers, construction people, all there celebrating and honoring us for that. I was honored to be able to accept this on behalf of Commissioner Cantal Mesa and Commissioner Frenchgo. Commissioner Trafficani received it at Mahoning. We had a good time to speak about it, and it was well received. So it's an honor that we received this. We thank the Chamber of Commerce for honoring not only us, but it's, they're honoring our county. They're honoring our business leaders, our economic development team, our employees. They're all part of this thing here. So thank you to the Chamber for recognizing us for that. Let's see. We had a very successful workshop yesterday, and, and I think we've seen today through this meeting or whatever, how efficient government should and could work between what we did yesterday all day long with the meetings and the meetings we had here today. This is how it should work, and I, I received a couple of texts that I noticed when I was back in the meeting that and people just texting boring, you know, that's how it's supposed to be. That's where government, it's supposed to be this way. You know, so hopefully people will get over that and realize they want good government, they want good wise use of their tax dollars, and it doesn't have to be a theatrical show every Wednesday that we can conduct the county's business, and we've been doing it even in the shadow of the circus. But to be here today, I just want to say, Martha, thank you for being here, Martha, and, and assisting us, our condolences on behalf of the whole county to you and your family on the loss of your brother, and you're, you're a pretty brave woman to be here the day after. I mean, to, to do your duty, that's, that shows your character right there. And, and secondly, Commissioner Cantal Mesa, thank you for contributing to the meeting and the workshop yesterday. We were able to come in here, and I was able to say, I second that, I second that, I second that, I second that, and vote yes on everything because of the hard work we did yesterday, the hours we put in yesterday, reviewing everything, understanding everything, tweaking everything, so that that's what we're supposed to do. We're not in here today to review and revamp and rediscuss everything and, and beat a dead horse. We're here today to ratify the work that we already put in through this week. So just a nice day today. I hope everybody enjoys the rest of their day. Anybody have anything for the, go to Trumbull County from the crowd? And, yes, sir? Our best regards to your, your Liberty Township trustees and your citizens over there. Again, we're, we're honored to be able to be able to do this, and we're able to do this for all of our townships out there in one way or another, and and we're glad that we can have the partnership with the community, you know, that we are, we're equals with you in the community, we're all servants, and we're here to serve your citizens, just like you as a Liberty Township trustee, you're serving your citizens first, but you care about the benefit of all of our county at the same time.
And I got, I got, I gotta say thank you to Trustee Chismar. Every time I have an issue with, with Liberty Township or anything that's going on there, whether it be the Veterans Outreach or this issue here, we've always communicated well and worked well together. He's an asset to that community. Greg, thank you for all you do for Liberty Township. They, they got a gem right there in you, so, and thank you for being here today.
And, and I want to come and say one, one last time also, thank you to our corrections officers, thank you to our nine-one-one dispatchers, thank you to all of our workers that had to work through the eclipse on Monday. It was what a community event it was. Everybody experienced it. We caught a little bit of heat up here. But when we look at the economic impact that happened in our county on Monday, the number of restaurants, the number of people that attended Trumbull County to share as a community and what we got to witness that God gave us, it was an amazing experience, and you're not human if you didn't have, you know, the hair on the back of your neck stand up on Monday when you actually saw it. And I hope people were able to enjoy it with their family and friends, and I know the county workers that left here have thanked us for that, and I saw it, and not just us, but I think we started something that there, I don't know anybody that, that wasn't let go early. People at Craftmane were let go, people at the banks were let go. So hopefully, or what we did here maybe inspired some business owners to take care of their employees a little bit better. And, and as a community, when we all looked up there, three nineteen or whatever it was, we all saw the same thing, and we were all one celebratory community experiencing something magical that day. So I appreciate everybody's support with that, and, and I think that's all forgotten now, what, what happened there. And I think the money we're going to make off the tax revenue from everybody in the restaurants and stuff is going to far surpass what we paid out for, for those few employees to, to be able to share with their families. And it was a good decision, and I commend you for voting with me on that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, anybody else? Anything on the phone that's pressing? Go ahead. Naming where you're from. Go ahead, star six, announce yourself. Okay, Audie Yoder, you have something you wanted to bring up?